All righty, good evening. We are called to order. This is our work session recessed from our December meeting. And we appreciate everyone being here. And we don't need to approve for a work session. We don't need to approve an agenda, do we? I don't see that. Very good, very good. Well, Mr. Tate, you have the floor.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming. I know this makes for a long day and hopefully the information provided, you'll find it beneficial. As you see, Ray Hoffman is not with us in person. He is an unfortunate victim of COVID. He looks like he's doing pretty good there. He's got a bit of a scruffiness growing from the last time I saw him. But he is with Carlson Environmental Consultants and we hired him and his company, or the company he works for, to work on a landfill tip fee study. And he's got a pretty extensive report that you'll hear him talk about and you have in your package. And I've got three items after the presentation and after questions for board consideration. And I'll talk about those later at the end of the presentation. But I'm going to turn it over to Ray and let him get started with his part of the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Happy New Year. Thank you for inviting me to this work session. If you don't mind, I'll pull up the PowerPoint that I think you all have received and I'll just go through this. Feel free to ask questions as we go through this and I'll do my best to answer those. I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and to have been involved with this life of site study. As Ronnie mentioned, it started out kind of as a request to evaluate the existing tipping fee compared to some of the neighboring landfill facilities. And it really morphed into a overall life of site study to see if your tip fee is where it should be, high or low. So without further delay, I'll start into this. Again, I'm with Carlson Environmental Consultants. I have a background in landfills, mostly with Republic Services for 13 years, which I oversaw 18 of their MSWs in six different states. Did a lot of these life of site studies during that time for them as that's their main way of knowing if their tipping fees are set properly to make a profit for the company or not. I'm also part of the North Carolina Swanna Board. I'm the chair of the technical committee there.
Can you hear me? Hang on just one second, Mr. Manager.
Sure.
Does Mr. Trias need a hard copy? Does anybody else need a hard copy of this? Yeah, I don't know the... Why don't we have our monitors here? Derek?
Sorry. Is Ray, are you going to be able to show the slides as part of yours?
Well, let's see. Maybe I've still got to do share screen here. I apologize for that. Can you see that?
Ray, hold on one second. Does anybody else need a hard copy?
I need your mic for somebody to take one of my... I'll see if I can copy like this. Greg, you want my hard copy? Two copies? That's better. We go ahead. Okay.
You go ahead.
Are you able to see that slide on the screen?
Yeah.
So the goal of this project was to determine if the current gate rate of $36 a ton was sufficient to cover current and future landfill needs. What we did is we set up a life of site model to go through all of the anticipated future costs for the landfill with the remaining airspace that's available to ultimately calculate what that number should be. So the process began around September 2nd with the gathering of vast amounts of information provided from the landfill, from state websites, other resources that were publicly available to create the life of site model. Those numbers were all input into their various tabs and I'll show some of those parts of the model later in the presentation. So as you know, landfills are a large financial investment over a long period of time. For Rockingham County, we're still looking at 35-plus years of available life at that facility. They're beneficial and necessary to the community. Without them, there'd be a lot of higher costs for trash to go elsewhere or there'd be trash winding up illegally disposed in places where you wouldn't want them in the community. Landfills are a potential risk with long-term liabilities. 30 years of post-closure care has to be accounted for as part of the Subtitle D requirements. So that's all accounted for within this life of site model. North Carolina landfill requirements, these are just some of the costs that are associated, you know, keeping the four-foot minimum separation. These aren't just an open dump anymore. They're highly engineered, costly facilities to construct and to maintain. So some of the requirements there, again, at the bottom, you know, when the site fills up completely with waste, there'll be a cap system that gets installed. This site has done some partial capping of areas that have reached final grade. And then at the end, they'll finish the system completely and closing the waste within to be protective of the environment. And then you'll have a 30-year minimum post-closure care period. So the life of site model, really, the primary thing is the summary page, which takes all of your permit information, remaining airspace, which you get from annual surveys of the waste that's been in place, calculating for density, which then converts over to tons that the facility has remaining to receive. And then ultimately, it takes all the future remaining costs and calculates a cost per ton to know what your overall gate rate should be. We'll take a look at the model here later on. So this life of site model looks at land purchases, historical tonnages. All of these things within these boxes are all accounted for in this life of site model. Equipment and the equipment schedule for yellow iron, the personnel, and then the highest cost per ton item is the operational cost, which includes things such as leachate, treatment, disposal, hauling, some landfill gas costs, seeding, erosion control, stone for roads, stuff like that goes into those numbers. Any questions so far? Okay?
Nothing seen, no.
So fortunately, the site had recently constructed Phase 4, so we had the benefit of having five bids and an average cost per acre established to input into this model. The low bid plus its change orders came out to about $376,000 per acre and we set the model at $366,000 per acre. So it was a good cross-check between the two to understand what future cell events may cost and to set those costs for the gate rate going forward. Some potential things that could happen, there are some things that could help lower the cost per acre. Some of those have been identified here below. There's also some things that could be done that would help future site operations by changing up some of the future designs of cells. It's important to protect clay liner materials on the site so they'll be available for future cell projects. Off-site clay materials always run higher due to the nature of having to haul it in. So identifying those locations onsite and protecting them are going to help keep the cell construction costs low. The site also recently did a partial capping over Phases 1, 2, and 3. And so we were able to use those five bids with an average of $186,000 per acre, set the model at $190,000 per acre. So we have a pretty good system within the model for actual recent historical costs. Not to say that we can't improve on those in the future, but for comparison sakes, we had some good data to use for the initial model rollout. One thing to be aware of is the airspace underneath those capped areas will continue to degrade and decompose over time, which then will create new airspace. However, it'll be inaccessible with that cap in place. So that airspace may be gone forever unless it's decided to remove the cap and refill those areas. Several years down the road, not anything we have to worry about anytime soon, but... So keys to the model, identifying the remaining costs uses historical or industry information to anticipate the future costs. So the earlier that we are able to identify all of the future remaining costs, the more tons that will be available to distribute those costs over. So identifying costs early makes this model more successful. It's also important to update anytime, but at least do it annually. So this life of site model is an easy Excel spreadsheet, something that the county will be able to maintain and keep it updated as new cost information comes in, new projects are identified, and as the annual tonnage numbers and airspace available become available from surveys. So we're going in the wrong direction. So the overall rate, the last point there on the right, increasing the density will equate to more tons for the facility. And that is something directly that operations can manage and should try to achieve a greater density. The higher the density number, the better. Currently, the life of site density number is about 1,400, little over 1,400. Many MSW landfills are achieving 1,800 pounds per cubic yard. So I think that should be a goal that the site should strive to achieve. If they are able to achieve 1,800 pounds per cubic yard, would result in additional nine years of airspace for the facility. So pretty significant just by increasing the density. There's permit changes that have happened, such as slope changes from 4 to 1 to 3 to 1, lowering the base elevations to get more airspace into the permit, which I think is currently happening through the design hydro process that LaBella's doing for you. And then, of course, the operational efficiencies, such as keeping soils out, increasing the densities, can all help towards changing that gate rate that the life of site model will be able to help predict. Again, some of the points that I just made, the increase in the density. Key component of this is operator training on the equipment and getting proper compaction. I think Edward and his crew from the day that I watched on the soil study is a pretty well-oiled machine out there with the daily cover. So helping them get their compaction and density rates up shouldn't be a major challenge for the site, but it does take a plan and it does take some effort. Again, trying to add that nine years of life to the overall airspace available. Just some other tools that are available to help achieve that increase in density. Smaller working face, GPS on the equipment, changing up your alternate daily cover system from the tarp soil to maybe a posie shell or some other system, and then reducing your soil use down to closer to 15% will help increase that density. I mentioned the permit modifications with the slopes, the base grades, the waste footprint. And then really, here's where you have the most opportunity to lower the operational costs. Again, the density, set goals, train the operators, monitor their performance, and achieve better results in density. Leachate's a pretty high number for this site and entering into any new cell will generate millions of gallons more leachate in a given year as the initial layer of waste is put in place. Phase 4 was a rather large cell that was split in two with the grade in two different directions, which helps. But both of those halves were still pretty large halves to the cell and they... The one side with the waste in it generates leachate. The other side fortunately is being kept separated and treated as stormwater, much lower cost. Landfill gas, develop alternative uses and sales for the landfill gas. I know there's been attempts out there with power generation. There's also opportunities, I think, with combining sale of landfill gas for evaporation of the leachate, kind of a win-win on both scenarios. Again, soils, reducing the soil use out there will go a long ways at increasing the density. Less soil will consume less airspace that's meant for waste. So continuing to reduce the amount of soil will be a big item. The heavy equipment, continued with operator training. I know the site indicated that some of the operators that they're able to hire may lack some heavy equipment training. So hopefully those things can be implemented to where they get the training once they are hired so that they effectively use the equipment the way it's designed and it'll go a long ways towards preventive maintenance and lowering the cost to operate too without having severe mechanical issues. And then the staffing, training, setting goals, monitoring, and reward in performance. So decreasing and increasing future costs. My experience with cell construction, I've not only been a consultant, I've also been on the owner's side and constructed numerous landfill cells over the years at those 18 landfills that were under my charge. But I've also been a contractor in which I was able to construct five of these landfill cells over time. So having more detailed quantities provided in the bids will help lower the cost of the bid, something that the engineering design firm can easily provide. It helps to reduce and eliminate confusion in the bid process so that you actually get a better bid. It's better to identify the higher cost items versus looking at all of the cost items. So identify the high ones, taking out some of the lump sum line items from the bids and actually putting detailed activities, excuse me, with some of those costs associated will help you target higher cost items and get them back in line with what should be industry standard. Keeping the life of site planning going to identify the future costs should always, you know, be on the forefront of things and done at least annually. Communications with other landfill owners, you know, we all have NC Swanna, attend their conferences on an annual basis when COVID's not impacting us. But it's pretty easy to reach out to some of your neighbors and share information on what their costs are to help improve your own costs. And then finding some beneficial uses for the landfill gas, such as power generation, leachate evaporation. So one of the things that I was tasked with was identifying the other landfill rates within a 50-mile radius of Rockingham County. So these were the landfills that I looked at. And some of them are C and D, some of them are MSW only. And then the ones that are highlighted in yellow are an MSW slash C and D mix, similar to Rockingham County's. As you can see, the mixed has a low of $33 a ton and a high of $45 a ton with an average of $39.30 a ton. Rockingham County is sitting at $36 a ton plus the $2 a ton for the state's disposal tax that goes towards cleaning up orphan sites around the state. Any questions so far? I'm moving pretty fast through this.
Nothing seen at this time.
So environmental site compliance is really what it's all about. The state wants every permitted site to be in compliance. This site is well-run, appears to be in good condition. That's a good indication that the finances are good. They've got the proper personnel and equipment to be able to run the site effectively, get the daily cover in place at the end of the day, and go home safely. So I was very pleased with the way the site looks and the way everybody there has a professional attitude and the way they manage waste on a daily basis. So let's see. 2021 federal air compliance rules are going to change. You've already started down the path with LaBella changing your air permit for the new XXX NSPS standards. These are going to make it much more challenging for staying in compliance from the air side of things. So you should anticipate that those costs are likely going to go up in your monitoring and just something to be aware of, that 2021 could see some additional costs for keeping your caps in check and making sure you have no surface emissions, getting out from any of the penetrations on the site. We're also watching NCDQ as they're adopting new rules that are going to impact C and D and MSW waste rooms. Those rules were objected to by the private waste industry, so they're a little bit in limbo right now, but they could have some significant impacts on existing facilities and how they operate. So some areas to focus on as a result of what the model is telling us. So the overall life of site model rate is showing that the gate rate, based on known future costs for the site, should be around $42.55 per ton, which is 655 per ton higher than the current rate. Some areas that may need to be looked at a little closer are the closure and the post-closure financial assurance, the actual versus reported. So the closure amount that's reported, that LaBella provides a number for and you keep financial assurance funding for, is based on if the site were to close today. This life of site model assumes that you'll make it to full capacity and therefore it generates a larger number for the closure amount. So don't be too alarmed that those numbers don't match. Just be aware that this number in the life of site model is looking at what your actual costs are likely to be when you go into post-closure. That should be evaluated a little closer to see if that number needs to come up. So the model anticipates 14.7 million will be required for post-closure while the county currently reports 2.6 million. So that was probably the largest difference. It's pretty much how every landfill does their financial assurance right now, but it's something to consider going forward that you may want to tuck away a little more in the post-closure amount there. Increase in the density can push Cell 5 construction out a year or two, which would help lower that model difference of the 655 a ton down to 587 a ton, if you're able to get it out another year. And then operating expenses stuck out as the highest at $1,294 per ton, which included leachate generation, which is higher due to the new cell filling. And I think new cell filling is going to continue out there probably for another year or better. So those numbers may stay high until they get enough waste in place to start lowering the leachate generation. The E and S for seeding in rock was also a high number that stood out, as did the equipment, maintenance, rental, and fuel for some of the costs and the operating expenses. So the engineer's recommendations, my recommendations, I guess, would be twofold. Really, look at increasing the gate rate over a period of time to get closer to that 42.55 number, but also continue to work with operations on improving the density by reducing the amount of soil being used and other training mechanisms to get that density number up, which will result in more tonnage available to go in, which effectively will lower that 42.55 per ton number down to some other number. We can run the model for different scenarios and see what that would take and how long it would take to get there. I have not done that at this point, but it, you know, it's a two-stage process. You can come up in the gate rate or you can come down in the gate rate by doing some operational changes. So any questions?
Give us just a second.
Sure. I pulled up the life of site model. There was anything you wanted to... If there was anything you wanted to scroll through or look at in detail, we could certainly do that as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Here, go ahead, Commissioner Pertle.
Yes, sir. I had a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Reese Pertle. When we sit in your handout, when we talk about cell construction, and Ronnie, this may be something that you answer. It says we use four bids from five bidders, and the average was $441,331 per acre. Was that a wide range? Because I noticed that the low bid with change orders was slightly less. And I guess my question is going to be, if this is a future model, how did we set the model at 366,446, which is less than what we did last time with change orders? You know, I would think that the cost may go up actually than decrease. I just want to make sure that I'm reading that right and I'm understanding. Typically, when we do something tomorrow, it costs more than what we did when we did it today.
Yeah.
And so I just want to make sure that I understand that. And that same question is going to come up a little bit later, but I was just looking at that. And then when you said, looking at the capping, we used five bids at 186.631. And when we set that model, we set it at slightly more, which makes sense because it probably will cost more to do it in the future. I'm just wondering how we determined one was going to, we set the model lower on the, what it cost us last time on the construction, but slightly more on the capping.
All right. Let me, Ray, let me answer the first part of that about the bids. We had five bidders for the project we just completed, and I think the low one, two, and three bids were very close. I think four and five had gotten a little bit higher. I think they probably had enough work and they put a number out there. If they got it, they were going to, you know.
Which would elevate that.
Right. And so, but I know the first one, two, and three were very close, and there was not, I do not remember the exact difference. I can get it for you if you want it. But one and two, I think it was probably less than $200,000 or $300,000 between the two on a five or $6 million job. So it was not a lot of separation between one and two. And I'll let Ray talk about how he set the model at those numbers, but as far as the bids, we had five bids, and that was the spread of them. With one through three were close, and then they sort of got out of hand there. So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great explanation, Ronnie. And really, the setting of those numbers to be a little bit less in cell construction or a little bit higher for the capping doesn't have a great impact on this life of site model. They were just set arbitrarily to kind of work in that they were in the right ballpark. So they could be adjusted to be exact, but they're in the ballpark. I think there are some things that can be done on future cell construction bids that will help lower the cost per acre. But again, you know, that number for this model is just to be in the ballpark.
And I mean, one more thing, the change order with the low bid, we had, I think, either two or three change orders, but the single biggest one was for rock encountered where we had to put a sediment retention pond, and we could not, we even looked at relocating that redesign and everything, and it just wasn't economically practical to do that. So we ended up having to have them blast that rock out to put that sediment pond in, and I think that cost was a little bit over 100 grand. So that was the single biggest change order we had for the last project.
Okay. That makes much more sense to me.
Yeah.
Can I follow up on something that I just heard? Believe he indicated that there were some things that could be done to lower the cost in the future. So whatever those things are, has that information been shared and noted for future?
It will be when we get to the point of designing and getting ready to permit and bid the next cells.
But you've got the information.
Yes, sir. And we have communicated some of that with LaBella. One of the biggest things, and I think he addressed this, was the size of, the size of this one cell, which is about 11 acres. And the next one proposed to be constructed is roughly about five and a half acres. And if you think of it, instead of having a pie cut in half with two projects, this will be cut in quarters when we do the next.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that part of what we've paid for got you that information that's needed to help with that in the future.
And in addressing the other thing, you talked a lot about the operational things on our end. We've had this report for several months, and we have talked with staff about implementing those changes operationally early on. They're already working on those as you're hearing this now.
Thank you, Ronnie. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, I know in the past year and a half, I guess it is, we've had some extraordinary erosion problems out there. Is that not to be expected in the future, or is that totally under control?
Right now, I think it's under control because we have the permanent cap on those side slopes that he referred to as the partial capping. And Edward's here, and you haven't had a whole lot of erosion out there since we've been, I guess, one of the fortunate things with all the rain is what was planted has come up and taken holes. So we're not seeing the erosion in those areas. In the new cell, we're not high enough out of the ground right now to have an impact with that.
I noticed in the cost projections Ray put out, there was, I don't know how big the seeding and so forth expenses were. I'm just trying to get a comfort level that you don't foresee those in the future.
I think we will always have some challenges on anything that has a slope that steep, but as it appears right now, the, what was done is permanent capping is in place and holding well. What was done before was temporary seeding, and then we would have areas we would temporarily seed and then have to go back to and put more trash in and those types of things working in sequence. I don't know we'll see that for the time being because of where we're at with the new cell. So I think some of those numbers will hopefully decrease some.
Thank you, Ms. Tate. Any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Berger?
And I don't know who this question needs to be addressed to, but we were also forwarded, I think from Ronnie, some backup data to support, I guess, the presentation. That backup data included a heavy equipment replacement schedule, and I couldn't help but notice between 2021 and 2055, as we're putting in figures to replace different pieces of equipment, that the price never changed for each piece. So I'm not sure how much of an impact that would have on any of the recommendations. I don't know who came up with those figures, but certainly it kind of goes along with what Commissioner Pertle said earlier as far as cost over time.
Right.
You know, you would anticipate those going up. So I guess, one, where'd the numbers come from? How accurate? Certainly, we can't completely predict those future costs.
Right.
How reliable is it when we're factoring in the same cost in 2021 that we could be factoring in in 2055?
Right. So Lance forwarded that concern to me that you had about that, and I sent an email to Ray, and he had responded back that he did not put a factor in for inflation. And Ray, you can chime in anytime, but thinking mainly that this model would get updated every year. So we would see, know what those actual costs are going forward. And Ray, I think there was another reason why, if you wanted to talk about that.
Really, this model should be updated every year, and the costs that are in there that are shown were the costs that were provided from the site's original equipment schedule. So I have not reached out to any of the equipment vendors to update their numbers for specific types of equipment. The county has asked me to extend into doing a heavy equipment study. Unfortunately, with COVID at the site and then COVID here in Statesville, that hasn't been completed just yet, but it is in the works, and we'll be able to update the schedule with some real numbers here at the completion of that. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Well, if Ray's going to be doing some sort of equipment study, would that include perhaps reviewing the equipment we have, the equipment we desire, and/or the equipment we need to see what's needed and what's desired and what's practical and what's not?
Yes, sir.
From what I ascertained from our agreement with him, is he would look at our existing, what we need to actually maximize our equipment. So your contractor, if they say replace it in 2024, and he said, well, you can do this, this, and this, replace it in 2027, basically what he's doing is coming back to us to maximize all of our heavy equipment so we can get the best bang for our buck.
Well, I guess, and just to clarify, would that also include perhaps saying, with the size of your facility, you don't need that, you would be better off with something different or something smaller?
I would hope that would be the case, Ray. Right?
Yeah, absolutely. Based on the tonnage of this facility, you've probably, you're probably a little heavy on some of your equipment currently, but all that needs to be looked at so that you have the right size. Of course, you've got the equipment there now, so it's going to be a matter of determining how do you start to phase some of that equipment out, put it on the auction block if it makes sense, or get a different piece of equipment in there that's better suited for your particular operation. All that's going to be looked at.
That's good. That's good. I guess this also went through the Solid Waste Committee?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And what did that committee say? Commissioner Travis or Ronnie?
They, I think they found it informative and probably for the members of that committee, probably a lot more detail than they ever realized. I mean, the only thing that really came out of that meeting was the three recommendations that I've got to talk about after this, but no other recommendations than that.
So did that committee unanimously approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Bertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To touch briefly back on the other landfill rates within a 50-mile radius, what is our tonnage, what's our annual tonnage?
It's about 100, I think about 110,000 to 120,000 right now.
Okay. And I know that we typically have other counties that we compare ourselves with throughout the state. It's kind of our standard, if I'm correct, ain't Lance. And when we start looking at anything that we do here in county, we select a like-sized county with a like-sized population and close to a like-sized economic outlook, similar tiered county. Is that, am I correct, Mr. Manager? I'm just wondering if we did the same with, when comparing the landfill, or if we considered that too?
He, Ray, I think, did what we asked him to, to look at a 50-mile rate.
I mean, I'm just saying some of those is outside of 50 miles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we consider.
I don't think that he could.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just not sure that's, you know, some of these folks is, you know, are, and I look at their tonnages, we're kind of apples and oranges compared to what we do compared to, and then there's a couple on the low side, you know, but neither here nor there. I was just wondering if we even considered some of the like-sized counties that we often do when we do internal studies of, within other departments within the county? That was my question.
I mean, we can reach out to others if the board would like for us to. That's not a problem.
Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, this board is all philosophical, but a few years ago, we put in curbside pickup of recycling.
Yes.
And we instantly noted a reduction in the amount of tonnage, which is good. Increases the service life of our landfill. Hurts our income.
Yes.
I'm just curious, do you have a policy? Do we need to establish a policy? Because we're interested in a longer-lived landfill, but we've got to have enough money to operate. You understand what I'm coming from here? And I think at that time, we started taking tonnage from outside the county.
No.
Tell me how we're doing.
We do not take tonnage from outside the county.
But tell me how the impact of the recycling is on our income?
Well, we did see a small change in tonnage, but since that time, which curbside started in 2015, middle part of that year, the tonnage has increased every year, and we're, like last year was probably our single biggest year in probably 20-some years. So we're seeing.
Let me see if I can cut to the, you're saying even though we're doing this, we're still getting enough tonnage to maintain our budgetary process?
Yes.
While being environmentally concerned?
Yes.
Okay. That's good of you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Mr. Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, and I appreciate that because one of the questions that I get out in the county, and I think I've shared it with, out in the community rather, that I get routinely is that what is going on with the recycling? How is, you know, we had this last slight increase with waste management that Mr. Manager was able to get delayed for six months, and, but I had a couple of questions out in the community about the increase, and I think we all got a similar email about that increase and done an excellent job in explaining that. But the, there's still a lot of folks out in the community that don't truly understand that how important our recycling is. And the importance of why we recycle and as a result of the recycling, this is how it's impacting our landfill. And I'd said something to Paul Mary, I had an opportunity to talk to him. I'd really appreciate if we could get that information out there. We have a PEG channel that is starving for.
It is currently in the works, as you see.
That is starving for information.
Yeah.
And along those lines, Mr. Manager, this may be a question for you. With the recommendation from the Solid Waste Committee to increase this, and I think their recommendation was about $6.55, right, to 42.55?
No, no, no. That was what Ray's saying is what the tipping fee should be. The Solid Waste Committee proposed an increase of a dollar per ton.
Okay. Okay.
Well, here's, and Lance and I have talked about this, our goal with this was to figure out what we don't know and how to try to correct it or fix it. And in proposing the dollar per ton, we realized there's some operational things that we can do on our end to try to preserve airspace and gain life in the site, which will lower that need for a tipping fee increase. So we want to work on those on our end, but we felt like there needed to be an increase to try to get us to where, instead of going full bore one way, we sort of try to meet in the middle to where the tipping fee increase is as small as it can be while we maximize what we can do in operations to try to make that difference up. And so that's where we were coming from with the $1 proposal for that. As I said earlier, staff's already working on the operational things that Ray has brought up to us and have been for several months, and we'll continue to work on those. We want to look at the posi shell alternate for daily cover, those types of things. But our goal would be never to have to impose an increase that large, try to get it somewhere in the middle to where, find a happy medium, so to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Tate. Commissioner Travis?
Yeah, I just want to let the commissioner know that the Solid Waste Committee recommends
Yeah, I just want to let the commissioner know that the solid waste committee recommended a dollar now and then yearly, look at it, keep looking at it and stay on top of it, and we can skip a year probably or adjust based on what Ronnie's telling you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
Once Ray gives us that next sales spreadsheet, then we can dump our annual numbers in there and modify the recommendation to come out with recommendations on where they're at yearly.
Do we have a rough idea? If we do a dollar per ton, what will that affect? How will that affect the waste management fee schedule?
Okay. Yes, sir, I did. I spoke to waste management reps about that, and they, a dollar per ton increase for their customers in the county equates to nine cents per month increase, so a buck oh eight a year.
Nine cents.
Yeah.
Very good.
So that'll be on top of next year's increase that they have in July.
Yeah, this, yeah, the last tax increase was CPI.
Yeah. So they'll get another CPI.
This tax increase, the phone calls we get would directly be on us.
Well, no, not all of it, because if it goes into effect, you're looking at putting this in effect for July 1. So they'll get another CPI in July, July 1, right? So it'll be, we'll just have nine cents of the fifty-nine cent probably.
Gentlemen, any more questions? With that, let's go ahead and move to item one then.
Okay. Hold on just a second. So the first item is the approval of a dollar per ton tipping fee increase to take effect on July 1, 2021, as proposed by the solid waste committee.
Go ahead, Mr. Pertle.
I have a question. If we're going to wait till July 1, and we've still got some additional information that we're waiting on, why are we considering this tonight and just not part of the budget when we do regular fees and rates?
We can probably add it to our budget process.
I mean, I'm just thinking, if this is going to go all the way to July 1, should we not look holistically, especially if we've got some more information?
My only goal with proposing it at tonight's meeting was to give not only waste management, but the municipalities also a heads up as long as we could. That was my only goal with doing it tonight, so everybody would know as far ahead of time as possible.
Yeah.
We can always approve that dollar tonight. If we get the information, we can always change it for July 1. We all are starting your budget process in these couple of weeks.
We come back in, what, two weeks on a Friday?
Yeah, 27th.
Yeah, I don't think that short amount of time will make any difference at all.
No. I mean, I think that Lance has a monthly meeting with the managers, and obviously, he can share with them that this is being considered, so they may want to consider it, you know.
And they all, the towns all have reps on the solid waste committee, so they are all aware of this.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Travis?
I agree. You can ask Ray, is, can he give us some information about the heavy equipment before our retreat?
I'm not sure that I heard the question. Will I have heavy equipment information ready by the retreat?
Yeah, the retreat's 22nd of June, I mean, July, January, sorry. Wrong, wrong date. Is it 27?
About three weeks.
Yeah, I should be able to have this wrapped up by then.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me ask you this, Mr. Pertle, you want to just have it added to the agenda for our retreat so we can approve?
I think it should be part of when we do all the rates and fees, you know, when we adopt the budget, but we can certainly discuss it then. I mean, you know, it sounds like that's a, that's a.
You have the managers, I mean, I'll talk to them and let them know.
Well, they should know if they have a representation on the solid waste committee, and that solid waste committee unanimously voted.
Well, Lance could specifically reach out to them with that. Gentlemen, can we do that by consent without taking a motion on that? All right, very good. All right, item two.
Okay, the second item is to change the landfill holiday schedule to allow November 25th and 26th of 2021, and December 24th and 25th of '21 as holidays for the landfill staff.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah. How many days does the county get for Christmas?
Three. We can't, we can't be closed three days.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
At our last meeting in the solid waste committee, I did not realize that our staff at the landfill was only getting one day off for holidays because this board made a policy written up on our ground that they had to be open six days a week.
It's DEQ policy, actually.
Yeah. So, but we have the authority to change it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, no, we don't.
Not DEQ policy, but we can change what we do for our holidays. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Lance, I know we're working on the personnel policy, but in that personnel policy, can we specifically address the landfill employees, and if we have to make their holidays float so that they can adjust and get their time off? I certainly have no problem with it. That's the right thing to do.
Exactly right. That's what I see.
I mean, I don't mean to quash your motion or anything like that, but I just want you to consider that I think it should be a scenario where we have a floating holiday for those employees. They should get just as many holidays as the rest of the county. If they have to take Christmas in July, if they work it out with Ronnie, I care less.
You want to amend that motion?
Well, I would, I think your motion stands.
Yeah.
The motion stands, and we can request the county manager to do exactly what Commissioner Pertle suggests.
Yeah, because I think the motion has to do with the closure of those days, and he's talking about just.
Vacation policy.
Yeah.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Does that sound all right to you?
Yes, sir. That's very good. Thank you.
Gentlemen, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ronnie.
And the last one is.
Should be discussed in closed session and should not be addressed here.
Okay, all right. I will remove that recommendation.
Just in case Tom's on the up, he's out there in this world where that rule is.
Zoom.
Okay.
Zoom, Bill.
Very good.
Gentlemen, thank you so much for coming. I appreciate your time and your patience. I know it's a long report, but I think it's important, so.
Thank you.
Anything further? No. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, rise.
Aye.
Rise.